Hello everyone and thank you once again for joining us for the City Commissioners Report. I'm Shannon Deskins with East Kentucky Broadcasting for Pike TV. Normally, we sit down with our city commissioners and talk about what's going on in the city, but because of the time of year, we're getting into festival season and tourism season. I have our two tourism directors for the area, Jesse Bowling with Pikeville City Tourism and Tony Tackett with the county. Welcome guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I got some nods and some smiles when I said we're getting ready to get into a busy season. You both were like, "Oh yeah."
Absolutely Shannon. It's a busy time of year for Tony and I, more so his office probably as far as the events and the festivals go, because they handle the majority of that stuff. The city more or less handles the logistics and other things that I get to participate more in with that. So it's a, we're gonna have a busy year. We look forward to it.
And to think about it, March is almost gone. I mean, to walk outside, you'd think it was February.
Yes.
The groundhog lied, obviously this year. But yeah, we're getting into festival season almost, I mean, April is next week.
Yes.
So looking at some of the lists that you all had given me, it looks like, you know, April 6th, right off the bat, you're looking at the Country Music Highway Road to Fame's getting started.
That's right. It begins, it kicks off the season for the festival, the Tony's Office, the Pike County Tourism and the Pikeville City Tourism, along with Paintsville Tourism and Pressonsburg Tourism. And then I think-
Boyd County Ashland.
Boyd County Ashland are sponsors of the Country Music Highway Road to Fame. And last year, Pike County virgin native Logan Hall was the winner of the Country Music Highway Road to Fame. So it's a fantastic competition for our local talent to exercise that Country Music Highway Road to Fame. And Tony had a big part to do with that as well. Tony, you wanna?
You know, the number one thing is that we need at the moment, Shannon, is getting our artists aware that this competition is going on.
Right.
It is a region competition. They could be the next winner. And of course, there's some great thoughts into it. We are looking for the next live artist, the next Loretta Lynn or Dwight Yoakam. And you know, that's our goal is to find that next one and relay it to Nashville and see where they can take it to. And so they could call Jesse's office, my office, for any details, but you know, we're looking for the artist. It does start up, the first is April the 6th, and it is at the Hampton Inn Hotel. And they're gonna find the next artist and of course, as we know Pike County is full of them.
Now will you be having different regional, I guess preliminary type things like you're having here at the Hampton?
Yes, it goes to Genu Wally the next day.
Okay.
Then two weeks later, it goes into Paintsville and Ashland. And then of course, these are just beginning of, it doesn't end up until the late June. And as Jesse said, you know, we're looking for that next Odoin and we're pretty for sure it's in Pike County.
We've got plenty of space between signs on the Country Music Highway-
We sure do.
We sure do.
And you're talking about all the tourism offices that are participating. I mean, it's not very often that you can get, come up on a project that you can collaborate with so many other tourism offices. I mean, we have found so much, especially in the past few years, you know, we can promote ourselves, but when other people help us promote our entire area-
It's a win-win.
I mean, it's so much better off, right?
It's a win-win.
Always is Shannon too. And the, Tony and I myself, in those meetings, and it's not only just about the tourism offices, but I have to speak of the ad district.
Oh my goodness.
They play a very significant role in helping us with this Country Music Highway Road to Fame. And it's fantastic that the ad district does that. So, I mean, it's, again, there's so many more other people that play a part of this. It's very, it's very large and we look for it to be very exciting and very big this year.
You know, Community Trust is a large sponsor on that. We could not do it without them. And like Jesse said, the Tourism Association, the tourism offices, even the state has got behind it. Last year, we got a grant through the State of Kentucky for it to be able to make sure it was sturdy and where it needed to be. And you know, every tourism office along the highway believes that third county has that artist. But you know, we were very proud of Logan Hall to win. And we feel that the next artist is right here. It's just they haven't shown their face yet.
Oh, gotcha. So you're feeling pretty proud of Pike County right now?
Absolutely.
We go out there every day and promote Pike County, every square inch of it. And you'll not find two guys who were more proud of doing that.
That's right. That's true.
Well, and you mentioned the state even coming onboard with the grant. So I mean, how great is it to have something that starts out small and to have the State of Kentucky or the government recognize it to the point that they feel that it's worth, you know, awarding a grant for?
It was a buy-in. It was $25,000. And they came onboard because we are the third scenic byway in the state, the Country Music Highway byway. And they see what we're doing. They see the 100 to 200,000 red buds that are planted along this highway. They see the projection that has took 20 years to get where we're at today. They see that and they wanted to be involved, but they also wanted to highlight it. They wanted to make sure that there was something behind it that kept it going. It wasn't just a one-time thing, so.
Well, and that's the key to anything, you know.
Exactly.
Once you find a good thing, it's how to keep it.
Right.
And how do you keep it going? So it's good to see that you guys are doing that with that one project. And we've got so many more to talk about-
Oh my.
-that we're getting ready to do. And you're talking about the scenic byway. Well, you've gotta keep everything clean and there's a pride event coming up Jesse.
There is. That same Saturday Shannon, the Pikeville Panther Pride Club, along with some of the city coworkers, Sean Cochrane, they're gonna be doing a river cleanup on April the 6th. So it's a great thing, you know, we have the Hatfield McCoy River Trails that also begins in April and we'll get to that a little bit in a little. So, but it's good to have a nice clean riverbanks and everything to get that good and cleaned up so that people can go out and enjoy that and have a beautiful view on the water.
You talked about that and that's what I was getting ready to mention is the view on the water. For so long, you know, we pay attention to what we can see from our roads. You forget that sometimes things go over the riverbank. And now that you're promoting the waterway so much, it's like, oh no, what's it gonna look like when you're in the water looking out? So it's good to see groups like, you know, Kelly Scott and her group at Pikeville High School are very involved-
Very much.
-in recycling and the environment and I think that's catching on. I mean, are you guys seeing more youth and more people get involved in-
Every day.
I guess the pride, you couldn't have picked a better word for that. We have to be proud of where we live.
Oh, and we, and Tony and I exceptionally are. And the Pike County Pride Club and the Pike County Pride Program, along with Jimmy Del Sanders and them, they do a fantastic job every year. You know, Fish Trap is a big cleanup project. The local areas, the Pompeii area this year that's gonna be done. I mean, there's so many areas in Pike County that needs that and they're now getting that attention. And it needs to continue to do that. And the schools need to continue getting involved and helping clean up the area as much as possible. So, and it helps when we're able to bring recreational activities such as the river trails, Hatfield McCoy River Trails, such as the ATV Trail that's coming up by the county. You know, that's gonna make those that much more pleasant. And when, and from Tony's position and my position, I think I can speak for the both of us, that makes a difference when tourists come into our area. When they come into our city and they come into our county, that makes a difference. And so you know, we want to encourage that and for people to be a part of that.
And it's those little things, like how clean it is on the side of the road that people pay attention to. It's the little details that make the big picture so much nicer for them when they come into our area. And we've got, you know, they come in for a one-time thing, whether it's to see Hatfield McCoy stuff or a festival. And that's, that's your time to capture them and say, "We've got more to offer, plan another trip."
Exactly.
Very much.
Or they may be here for a weekend and we want them for the, for a week, you know, so they plan their next trip. We had Canada and Mississippi into the office yesterday, two different family members. And they were traveling with six in a group. So we're seeing larger groups travel. And when we talk about cleanup Shannon, we also have to remember, we are the largest county in the state. Could you understand the undertaking it takes? Plus the flowage of water that we receive into our county from other counties that flows the trash in. So it's an undertaking and a half, but I tell you, we get a lot from, we get a lot of people speaking of it, how clean our area is, and we get a lot of people talking about the beautiful flower baskets and the friendliness that our city and county has to offer. So it just goes hand in hand.
And that's probably one of the most compliments that we receive, isn't it Tony?
Oh yeah.
The flower baskets?
Is the flower baskets and the beautification of the downtown and even through the mountainous areas, through, you know, going through the Fish Trap area, through the breaks, leading through Elkhorn City. I mean, that's one thing that we honestly have that the tourists love. I mean, they love that.
Landscape. They love to see the landscape.
And you know, and we have advanced and we've got new buildings and things, but for the most part, the mountains and the scenery are the way that it's always been. And people from where the land is a lot flatter, they don't get to see that. We take it for granted. We see it every day. So it's hard for us to get into the shoes of somebody who's coming into this area for the first time and it's like, wow. You know, it's, it kinda refreshes it for us. Does it not you all? To see other people get excited of what we see every day?
It does.
And they, they remember it from childhood, because you gotta remember in the 50s and 60s and even in the 40s, a lot of people left to work in the factories and the steel mills from Warsaw, Indiana to Detroit. And they took their children with them. So you know, and those children remember these mountains, because they played in the creeks that we played in. They, they played around the railroad track that we played on. So they remember that. And when they come home to them, they're back home. So they remember it clean, so we're gonna leave it clean for them. And the beautification in our area from the roadways, I had a lady mention yesterday that you still leave your trees along the roadways. I think that's beautiful. She said, "So many communities take them out." And I said, you know, "We leave everything we can daily," you know.
Exactly. Then another thing, you know, April 13th, the very next weekend, we've got a big 5K. And that's something you're seeing a lot more of and you're hearing a lot more of 5K runs here and there throughout the city. But I think the Judy's Place one is the first one coming up, is it not?
It is Shannon. There has been another 5K I believe, but Judy's Place is coming up in April and it's of course, two weeks away. The city has received an abundant request for 5Ks and awareness walks. Literally Sean and I have probably received around 30 phone calls since January of different awareness walks or different 5Ks that groups are wanting to do. They're very popular right now. So it's something that we're very glad to be a part of. Judy's Place, you know, their principle of what their organization lives on is one thing that we definitely wanted to get in and support and be a part of. The 606 Pikeville Pavement Policy, the group of runners, they're actually assisting us and helping us determine that, because until this year, you know, we did some 5Ks and we participated or sponsored some, but we really didn't get into them as much as in-depth as what we're getting this year. So we had to reach out to the experts in the field and get their help. So they're, they're helping us determine which ones that'll, that we need to do and to have downtown and ones that we can actually have at Ball Amos. And then it's left up to Tony and I to promote them, so.
A lot of great, great things as far as 5Ks and things. Running is popular. I don't know any other way to say that, but right now it's popular. And people really are getting into wanting to run the 5Ks. It's on, you know, I talk to people all the time and it seems like more and more I hear 5K on somebody's bucket list. I wanna, I wanna be able to run a 5K. And we have, what, about one a month during warm seasons, don't we?
Very much.
I mean, it's close.
Yeah, it's close. There's definitely, if not a little, if not, there's probably an average of two, I would say, in event season, so.
Yeah, that's, it's just an awesome thing, another thing that we've got going on, because people travel to these. And they get into it and you'll see costumes and you'll see things. And I think that's, that's a neat thing. So looking forward to the Judy's Place 5K coming up, April 13th, April 18th, and then just a couple days later, it's hillbilly days. I mean, it's here.
Yes.
It is here.
And you know, with, with all the tourism influx that we saw in the last 12 months, are you expecting, both of you guys, more than usual as far as hillbilly days or more people interested in different things than usual?
I think so.
Yes.
I think that people are ready to travel more. I think that people are starting to more or less support the, the local festivals that these smaller towns have and things like that. And ours is the second largest festival in the state of Kentucky, next to the Derby Festival. But however, when you look at that, you determine, well, what brings those people in? And I have to honestly say, it's, Tony's Office does a tremendous job with marketing that. They spend thousands of dollars, and I'll let Tony go into that, but it's a, you know, it's something that, that is beneficial to our area. But I think there's more people across the Commonwealth of Kentucky that is actually coming in to the festivals now. And we definitely receive the outsiders, the out of states, the Shriners that come in from Canada. We definitely receive those people as well, but I think we'll have, we'll see more from inside Kentucky this year.
Yeah, and you would not believe the calls from Canada this year.
Really?
I don't know if it's, I'm for sure it's part of the Shriners. You know, there's a lot of Shriners in Canada, but the overwhelming amount, they want literature, they want to know now, they wanna know if they can download it, they wanna know how they can get the information and where they can get the hotel rooms. And we had a couple who called and got reservations, the last reservations that I know of at the Holiday Inn Express. And they called us right back and said, "Thank you for telling us, make that reservation now, because our hotels are filled up." And you know, our goal is to give the best festival-
That's right.
...we can, we can give. But also, you gotta remember, it's one of the greatest family-oriented festivals. I mean, you can, children to older people, from dancing to carnival, and you can't go wrong. Cannot go wrong with the hillbilly days.
No.
And it takes a, and it takes a tremendous amount of work from the Chamber of Commerce. They work on the festival six months out of the 12 months of the year. They, you know, they spend a lot of time working on the festival, but the city, the county and the chamber-
UMG, oh my goodness.
Yeah, there's so many that come together that make this festival what it is.
It is truly a collaborative effort from so many people.
And it's great. It's, as Judge Rutherford and I've heard him say many times, it's become a well-oiled machine. So it's, it runs smooth and the logistics is the easy thing for the committee to control. It's more or less become a checklist for us now, because everybody knows their role and knows their part and we just get it done.
You know, and how great is it to go, to already be at that point when it's gonna run itself and then have something like the Hatfield McCoy Mini Series happen?
Oh.
And you're thinking, "Well, I'm so glad that we're already got this down pat that we can focus on, on some other things." I mean, there's so many of us that have lived here our entire lives and we knew about the feud, we knew there were feud sites, but it's like, even the locals have been fired up by all of the, the people coming into town. Well, if they wanna see it, I wanna see it. I've never seen it. Are you seeing a lot of people that are from our own area who are wanting to take the tours and things like that?
Most definitely. We see our region, our senior citizens, our judge's office calls us and different judges throughout the Commonwealth call and say, "Hey, our senior citizen group wants to come." And they, they wanna have lunch there that day. We, schools, of course, we've got a school Jesse has just booked. We are talking to another school system. The incredible part about it is the history, the knowledge. And if we can get the senior citizens involved in it, the students involved in it, a lot of it is education. You know, we were territorial during that time period in life, like we are today, but it was much more harsh living conditions. And people wanna see where it happened. People wanna see the cemeteries, they wanna see that courthouse where the trial-
They wanna walk those steps.
They wanna walk those steps, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, and I've been lucky enough or fortunate enough to be at a couple of the sites and to be able to look down the very well that you know that the Hatfields or the McCoys looked down into. And you wonder what's in the bottom of that well, or you wonder what's around and you know that, I mean, you're truly surrounded by history and a lot of it's untouched.
Yes.
A lot of it is, a lot of it is Shannon. There was a lot that's, because of the interest from the locals, the experts obviously in the field, in my opinion, are Betty Howard and Reed Potter. And they do a tremendous job and they still research it. I mean, since the, the mini-series aired, we, you know, we now have Perry Klein's grave site. We, you know, we obviously have had the other sites that are there, but new sites have emerged. Bad Frank Phillips onto a lot on Second Street, so.
Yes.
I mean, we're, you know, the locals are getting involved and they're doing the research and they're bringing the information to us.
They're finding things they didn't know we had.
Which in general brings more work, because you know, they, those sites, Perry Klein's cemetery, oh my goodness, what it looked like when, when it was, I don't wanna say found, but it was, when it was recovered-
Rediscovered.
-rediscovered. And they came through and absolutely cleaned it up and made it, and it, I believe it's one of the perfect sites that we have.
It is a huge engine.
Beautiful sites that's on the mountainside. But those sites need historical markers, those sites need signage, they need all of that. So those are something every day added to the task of making sure that we're tying the shoestrings, you know.
And as many years has passed since the feud ended, I mean, we're still, it's still evolving.
Yeah.
It's almost like a breathing, a breathing thing, a creature that, that we find new things all the time and discover and change and move. So it's neat to see, 'cause somebody can take a tour one year and come back and take the tour again and it's gonna be different.
Correct.
Very much so. And that actually happened this last year. When we started doing the tours in June, I think it was around the end of June or the 1st of July, when Reed Potter had called me and, and said, "Come on, I got something to show you." And he took me to the Perry Klein grave site. So we did the tour for an entire month before that. So those people that took the tour, the first four weeks, didn't get to see the Perry Klein grave site, you know, so they'd have to come back again. And some of those did do that. And they, and it's real easy to do those, because the tours, you actually can, we have a website through Eventbrite, the Hatfield McCoy Tours 2013, at Eventbrite.com. And you can go through there and you can book your tour, or you can go through Tony's office. It's set up as a partnership between the two touristms that the, Sean Cochrane and myself narrate the historical tour, but we filter everything through Tony's office. So he handles all the influx of the people, their questions, providing their information, providing the cooler, providing drinks. We have, the city obviously purchased the tour bus, had it decalled out. So we get on the tour bus, we come in, we stop in front of the Hampton, in front of Tony's office. He has everybody ready, waiting and, and ready to go. So it's, it's, it's becoming a really smooth transition for the tourists. It's a one-stop shop kind of deal for them. So, and then we take them back to the hotel when the tour is over. So it's, it's, it's become a really, a really good partnership and everything that we have with the tour. And again, I don't know if Tony wants to brief or touch on it to-
Well, it's amazing that, you know, people can work together to see something great happen, because our tour money, the money from the tours go directly to an account, into an account for a monument for the McCoy family.
Right.
And our goal is to raise funds, reach out and make sure that we diligently do the work process to be able to see that that's done. And Jesse, I'll tell you, it's seven days a week. We've had tours from county judges throughout the state. We've had county court clerks association in, taking them completely around-
Family reunions.
Family reunions, class reunions, schools, senior citizens. Just one senior citizen run had 121 people on it, you know.
That's amazing.
That's amazing. From out of our county, they came and they ate lunch with us.
They did.
They took a tour. And the great thing is that if we can continue that and make sure we get the education out there, raise funds for a monument, and plus it showcases the beautiful Pikeville Pike County, Kentucky. And people are wanting to see it. More people say they're, they're coming back and that's the goal.
Right.
Absolutely.
And it's good to see such a collaborative effort between both of your groups and it's not a city-county thing. You know, at one point in the past, it may have been, depending on who you asked first, which tour, which version of the tour you were gonna get. Because like you said, people are very proprietary there.
Yes.
It's mine, but now everybody's coming together and like, "No, we've got to tell one, one picture, we wanna tell the big picture and show the big picture." And that's a good thing to see.
Yes.
We have to. In order to make it successful, I mean, it's just like hillbilly days, it takes everybody coming together to make it run properly and be successful. So that's one thing that we did. And it was, there was no question about it. It was, came together and boom, it's done. I mean, we put this thing together in a hurry.
Yeah.
And you know, so it's, it was something that we did and we jumped right in there and it's been successful ever since. The first eight straight weeks of the tours was booked solid, for that first eight straight weeks. We've already this year, about two weeks ago, started getting reservation for tickets for the tour this year. So I mean, it's already starting early. So that's a good sign.
That's a really good sign. And we kinda got off track a little bit, went into the Hatfield McCoy Tour thing, but we were, we were talking about the 5K runs and things like that. And but going back into April again, on the 27th, the Autism Awareness Walk. You talked about your awareness walks in addition to your 5Ks. And this one, is this the fifth year for this?
This is the fifth year for this. This is another, again, another county-city partnership. This was, the inception of this awareness walk came from the judge's office. We were willingly, more than able to jump onboard quickly with this. The Main Street Director at the time for the city had gotten involved. And then the second year, I started getting involved. And then ever since then, we've all been working on this thing. And it is a fantastic event for awareness for, for children. And I think last year we had, it had poured the rain, became very nice at the time of the walk, but it had poured the rain at the beginning and we still had almost 400 people. But the previous years, we were over 600 every year. So I mean-
That's really good.
That is really good. And the support of the community, the region, and there's even outsiders and parents that help us in the planning for this. It's, obviously both tourism offices are a part of this. It's, it's a great event and it's, it's gonna be another successful year, we believe, this year, so.
That's good. And it looks like we're gonna end up running out of time before we can get too far, so I wanna talk about something else. First of May, Muscle on Main starts up again.
Wow.
It does.
I mean, it seems like you're, you're thinking that's so far off and then you look at the calendar and it's not. I mean, it's almost here.
No, it's six weeks away, so I mean, it's right upon us. One thing I have to say about Muscle on Main, it was, it was, won the Judge's Recognition Award this year through the Kentucky Travel Industry for the top 10 events and festivals for spring of 2013. The reason why I mention that is Tony's Office and them had applied for the hillbilly days. It won the top 10 awards for spring of 2013. Well, the Derby Festival is also in that spring, top 10, 2013. But to have an event like Muscle on Main that's come along, you know, in its fourth season-
I mean, it's relatively new.
It's relatively new. To break into that barrier with those caliber of events says a lot, I believe, for our community. We have a lot of sponsors that work into that. Tony's Office does a lot of marketing for us for that. I mean, again, it takes everybody coming together to put that on. The Good Old Boys Car Club, the event wouldn't be what it is without them. You know, we have to have that car club. They do a tremendous job of help bringing in and getting the word out and bringing their vehicles down and showcasing those on Main Street. We have a great time. We look for this year to be a really special year. We've got some special things planned. We've got a lot more vendors. We've got a lot more vendors. We're, we had given away 25 free booth spaces.